Seven o'clock.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, looks that way.
Okay. Um, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Um, I'm not really sure. I, I don't have a flag tonight. So am I supposed to, uh, does everybody have a flag? Nobody have a flag? Are we supposed to do a flag salute or are we required to, or how's that work?
I don't think we're required to.
Right.
Is that gonna happen? Okay, I, I think we'll just avoid that because it'd be a little awkward to. Anyways, so I'll just move right into, uh, everybody get a chance to read the minutes from October 21st.
Yes.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion approved October 21st meeting minutes from Adam Cole, seconded from, I believe that was Zach. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All points in line. Motion carries unanimously. I, I think I should maybe step back just for a minute real quick. I apologize for jumping in that too quick. Uh, maybe we should go around and make introductions and make sure, um, I haven't heard Zach talk, but I think he just seconded a motion, but, um, should we do a roll call and, uh, introduce everybody else that's here? Um, so I guess we can start, uh, at the top of the screen. Looks like, uh, Jackie from the city of Boardman is here. Um, I'm here, Jacob Kane, Adam Cole, I can hear, he's here. Michelle Seeley is here. Um, Barry Byler.
Yes.
Is here. Yeah, Cynthia is here. Um, Karen Pettigrew with the city of Boardman is here. David Jones is here. Carla is here. Ragna's here. Zach is here. I see his video now. Um.
Is there?
Marty, are, are you there? We, we see your name.
Yeah, he's here.
He's there. Okay. Uh, Tony? I'm not sure who that is. Does anybody else know who that is?
Yeah, that should be Tony Connell.
Okay.
And Tamara Mabbett from Morrell County Planning just got in.
Okay. And then I see a phone number, five four one four eight one one three zero two one. Who is that?
That's Marty listening in on his phone, called in on the phone.
Okay. Tamara, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
Okay. So I think, uh, I think that gives us all seven commissioners. We know who's in the audience. We'll go ahead and move on to, uh, we approve the minutes, the old business. We've got, let me see here, old business, new business. Barry, maybe I have a typo. The, the agenda I've got shows old business being, um, the public hearing PAPA one dash 2020. And then the new business being PAPA two dash 2020, but, um, wouldn't both those be old business? You're still muted there, Barry.
There, the new business from Papa two dash 2020. Uh, we've received a request from AWS or ADS as they're being called now. To continue the hearing until the December meeting.
So, so do we even need to open it back up or, or just, I guess we designated. We designated tonight as a night to reopen it as a, uh, um, last period. So do we need to open that up and then, um, re, uh, pause it or how, how do we gotta do that?
And, and yeah, open it up and then recontinue it when we get out, when we get done with Papa one.
Okay, so let's just move into old business. Uh, we've got a public hearing PAPA one dash 2020. I can go ahead and read that public hearing at this time, and I'd like to, uh, just real quick, uh, for anybody that wasn't here before, um, go through the, um, the roles and, and, uh, uh, real quick abbreviation of, of what the hearing is about. On October 28, 2020, David Jones, on behalf of the Clem River Development submitted an application for a zone change for tax lot 1600 of Morel County Tax Map 4 North 25, section nine. This property is currently zoned tourist commercial and as a parcel of 9.24 acres. The existing zone, the proposed, the existing zones proposal request would create 7.41 acres of manufactured home park sub district and two acres of land industrial zone. I believe those acres are a little different though from what I saw in the application. Correct, Barry? It's not exactly two, it's one point, uh, and change.
Twenty, 1.83, I, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 1.83.
Okay, so that's kind of a background on what we're considering tonight in the public hearing. Um, I'd like to reiterate, uh, the planning commission's role in tonight's hearing is to come up with a recommendation for the city council to approve or deny. Is that correct, Barry?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a type four decision.
Okay. So now we've kind of, uh, explained what we're here for. Um, I'd like to at this time call for any abstentions.
I'd like to abstain.
Michelle abstains is.
We still have a quorum.
We still got six, I think.
She needs to state a reason.
The reason is because David called me and told me what he was planning to do. And I don't, in my good conscience, I don't feel good about making a vote on this.
Barry, are you listening to this? Cause I don't think that's good enough to abstain.
So you want me to vote?
I think you, I don't think you have a choice.
I, I think, I think there's some latitude and, and I could be wrong. Um, I don't know a lot about this, but if at any time any commissioner has any feelings of biased or, uh, conflict of interest at any time, I think a commissioner can abstain. I don't, I don't think there's any precedent to say she can't abstain. Um, so I, I think in a situation like this with six commissioners out of seven, I would, um, you know, I, I'd like to hear if anybody else has any issues with that, but at this time I think we've got a quorum and we can move forward.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I actually spoke with most of you about this.
Yeah.
So, so, and, and the reason being is that I wanted you guys to have as much information access to me is as much as possible with any questions that you had. So I don't think there's any reason to feel that, well, it, it's up to your own, up to your own conscience, up to your own dictates, but I've had, as far as the council goes, I've had a lot of people approach me before the, the vote is made. And it gives me more information, so.
Okay.
Well, this is, this isn't a financial gain. You wouldn't be gaining financially. And the purpose of being on a commission is you have to make hard decisions. I mean, you can't just abstain because you don't want to make a decision.
No, I just felt like I had information before it happened. That's it.
Okay. Well, I think David's correct. I think he's talked to almost everyone. Uh, trying to explain, you know, so that you didn't have to try to read through the writing.
Okay.
But we don't need to read through the writing.
Well, that, that being said, if Michelle still feels like there's the bias or any type of, um, um, reasons that she personally needs to abstain, I, I don't think there's any way that we can tell her she has to vote. So if Michelle at this time wants to make a decision, one way or another, we'll move on. Are you still gonna abstain, Michelle, or do you wanna vote?
If I vote, it's gonna, it's gonna be no, because he approached me and told me, and like he just said, he approached everybody. It's not fair.
Okay. So is that a? What's that?
It's a, it's, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, I'm just, I'm not gonna vote.
Okay, well, I, I respect that. Um, I, I don't feel like I have been, David didn't approach me, so I'm good to make a vote. Anybody else have any abstentions?
Okay.
No, not here.
Okay, we'll move on. Um, so is there any objections for jurisdiction? Take that as a no. Let's move right into the staff report. Uh, Barry, I think there's quite a bit of information in your original staff report and the amended staff report and, uh, and please go through any, um, responses or, um, answers to questions that were brought up in, in the numerous letters that were sent, um, to the commissioner for, um, review.
Well, most, most of the cha, most of the changes came in, page four of the staff report and Golden Housing. And I'll just read the whole thing. Review of chapter 10, Housing Policies, number 11 states, the city shall encourage residential development within the city limits in areas which are appropriate for urban development. The requested manufactured homes district, sub-district is residential, which is usually located in a residential district. Jackie, can you put up that, uh, paper that we put, got ready on the screen? In 2010, we went through and did, we, I, we identified all the vacant lots within the city. And fortunately, at one point during 2018, I saw on, uh, Google Earth that, there, I marked every, on every tax lot, all the vacant lots. And then when I saw that, that they had taken a picture in 2018, uh, that was separated by eight years and 10 days from the previous one that I put together. Uh, this is, this is the results. Uh, we had at the, at the time in 2018, 92, uh, single family residential lots, 64 of them, uh, were, um, still buildable. Uh, number of multi-family lots were 13. Large parcels, single family acres, 188.39 acres and large parcel, uh, multi-family were 53, 100. I did not do the, uh, count for the, uh, uh, manufactured home parks of districts. And I didn't do the count of acreage for, uh, future urban, which are, the future urban has an underlying, uh, residential, uh, that's the underlying district that future urban is in. When, when you count those in, the city has in excess of 200 acres of residentially zoned land and nearly 200 acres of future urban zone land. So, uh, there are three manufactured home parks and, and I, I concur with Mr. Jones that all of them are full. The, um, there is at this point in time, uh, 7.97 acres of manufactured home park sub district that are available for building. This would increase that by 7.7.34?
Can I ask a quick question?
7.41. What's that?
Um, so I just wanna make sure I got the numbers right. Um, there's, there's three manufactured home parks, um, built and three of them are full. How many acres do those three, tho, those three do not affect the, the available 7.4, did you say 7.4 acres?
7.41.
And that's available building with, without any development on them today?
The, 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 the 7.97 acres?
Yes.
That's out at, next to Driftwood Village?
Okay.
And that's 5.97 acres. And then there's two acres that are still zoned, uh, manufactured home park sub district on tax lot four, uh, number 411 of, uh, Morel County Tax Map 4N25E9CC.
Okay. And what's, what, just real quick, maybe?
Now, we have, we have about another 25 acres of, um, manufactured homes that are in a cooperative Bay of Vista. And 10.9 acres on one of the, on this Wilson Road Trailer Park. And that's, um, that's, that's one of the full ones. Hudson's Trailer Park, which is only just over an acre. And that one's full as well. And that's the sum of what we have for manufactured home park sub district.
Okay.
On trend, and, and the other goal that was brought up the most was, uh, the application will be, is transferred to goal 12, transportation. This application will be subject to the traffic studies and its projected to trigger actions in the interchange area management plan. Estimated number of trip ends that build out is approximately 880 trip ends per day. Now, this was taken from the, uh, from chapter 4.7 of our, uh, development code, which, uh, gives the numbers. I think that's pretty high. Uh, when I looked at the ITE manuals, um, I come up with more in line with about 550 based on the International Transportation Engineers, uh, Traffic Generation Manual. But what we have in code is what, what I put in for that 880 trips a day. And that's the combination of, uh, the potential layout that Mr. Jones provided in his narrative. This application will be subject to the interchange area management plan, provision for connector streets to provide adequate access egress alternate to Southwest Front. This request will also be subject to the transportation planning rules of the state. The valuations enlisted, valuations listed in the goal nine section of this report indicate the revenues of the requested manufacturer home and light industrial districts would fall short of meeting the required mitigations of streets needed. Uh, Mr. Jones in that, that possible, um, layout of mobile home park would provide, uh, one leg of the, by, uh, with, with a dedication of a right of way on the east side of, of the property would provide a connector road, but he doesn't, he doesn't own all of the property. There's another property owner involved. And that would, and then, uh, an extension of Oregon Trail would require the other property owner to participate in some of that as well. Okay. Uh, chapter 4.10 does require a traffic impact study. Uh, or would, and at, before any building is done, that is gonna have to be taken care of and, uh, additional conditions would be looked at at that time. Public facility standards, um, water, wastewater and stormwater, um, in coordination with other utilities. As there is no development associated with this request at this point, um, chapter 3.4 would be, uh, applied at the time of development. Uh, vehicle and bicycle parking, chapter 3.3. Uh, the BDC required parking for development and methodology for computing these requirements. As there is no development associated, the application request, this is the, the, um, would be applied at the time of the development as well. Manufactured home park sub district, chapter 2.1 is found in, uh, subsection 2.1.500 of the BDC Boardman Development Code. The layout of a park and building criteria are by State of Oregon statute administrative rules subject to the Oregon Manufactured Dwelling and Parks Specialty Code concerning the size of lots and public services for each lot. There is no applicant, current application for the manufactured home park. Um, this zoning will be available uh, for a manufactured home park in a buildable lands inventory. It will be the only pro, property zoned as such. There are currently 5.97 acres on the property associated with, oh, 5.97 acres and two acres of property associated with Papa two dash 2020. There is a need for additional acreage somewhere in residential district or sub-districts. This has not been a manufactured home park built, there, there has not been a manufactured home park built in the area since the mid 70s. Additionally, manufactured home, homes can be placed on single family lots should they meet certain criteria in the residential zones. Uh, the tourist commercials, chapter 2.2. The application would remove 7.41 acres of tourist commercials on property from the buildable lands inventory. This would represent 19.6 of the total of 37.7 acres of tourist commercial today. Chapter 2.4, um, the application would remove 1.38 acres of, or 1.83 acres of tourist commercials on property from the buildable lands inventory. And I did a quick search of that and that is about 16.198 or 19.16 acres of available light industrial. Access and circulation, uh, chapter 3.1. The required right of way to create the loop road as identified in the interchange area management plan would be requ, would be required. And that is about, that, that will take care of about one third of what needs to be done to complete everything on the east side or west side, excuse me. Uh, chapter 3.3.
Hey Barry, can I ask one question on, I, I apologize. I just run the numbers in my head. I wanna make sure I got, uh, the right. So removing 7.41 acres from tourist commercial to go to manufactured home park, removing 1.83 acres tourist commercial to go to light industrial, a total reduction from tourist commercial of, uh, nine point, um, God, I just left this written down, sorry.
Eight, seven, five, zero, six.
One, two, three, plus 7.41.
Yeah.
So 9.24 or something. And that would be roughly reduction in existing tourist commercial by 24 and a half percent. Is that about right?
19.6 is what I come up with.
But that's on the 7.41 acres, right? So have you added the reduction?
No, that's, yeah.
You have.
So it'd be a little higher. It'd be a little higher than that was the, would be a little over 20%.
So you add the 1.83 acres of the light industrial, we're up around 24 and a half percent reduction of tourist commercial.
That's correct.
Okay.
And you have to have a park for kids.
And that, that's part of what would be in
Exactly.
Oregon specialty quote.
Yep.
That would be in the Oregon specialty code. The required amount of park.
All right.
Which is administered by the building codes, not by, not by, we, on, on manufactured home parks, the city can designate access egress and basically screening. And that's, yeah, uh, everything else would be, uh, through the building codes division.
All right, all right. I guess we're, why are we on 3.3 now or are we on 3.2?
Uh, well, on 3.3 was where we were heading.
Okay.
Um, the required parking for development and methodology for computing, uh, these requirements, uh, that's, that's what chapters 3.3 is for. As there is no development associated with this application request, um, it would be applied at the time of development. And again, the manufactured, Oregon manufactured dwelling and park specialty code may have numbers different, which would apply, uh, to, uh, this parking issue based on what is allowable in side of a manufactured home park. And that, that would be a call of the, the BD, or not the BDC, but the Building Codes Division. Public facility standards, the application will be required to meet the provisions of this chapter prior to any, uh, construction commencing. Um, it appears we have adequate, um, capabilities with water and sewer, stormwater. Um, we've got stormwater lines that, uh, are adjacent and we should be able to create, get into either stormwater lines. Because once again, building codes division is going to be, may require storm drains where, uh, the way we handle stormwater management here is we do low impact development, which spreads the water out and lets it percolate because we're fortunate to have, uh, high permeability soils. And we've found, uh, the places where we have used the infiltration method for stormwater management. It actually works better than what we were seeing with the actual pipe system that we had from, that was put in in the 70s. And then on the comprehensive.
At the camera.
It's kinda hard to do that and read it at the same time.
No, hard. Zoom is hard.
Um, comprehensive plan goal, citizen involvement. Um, the application has met all, all of the policies. We had to, I, I had to double clutch because I, we didn't get the, into the, um, DLCD process early enough. And so we had to withhold the first hearing and we went out for re-app, the application and sent, uh, notices out. Uh, this application, uh, land use planning. I think with the changes that were, have been made with some of the comments that we received, uh, will meet this, um, policy, the policies of chapter two. Uh, we, goal three, we have no, uh, it's no agricultural lands within the city, so the chapter does not apply, same with. Chapter does not apply same with forest lands, chapter four. Doesn't apply to the city of Boardman. Natural resources scenic and historical areas and open spaces. It's within the policies, we don't have a natural resource. Inventory to work off of. It's one of the places that we. Will consider to to get accomplished over the next few years. Air, water and land resources quality. It's it's not within the ten year time of travel. For our. Collector wells scenario for our water system. And we've got the. Wastewater lines. Capable of handling any of any. Of that, so. Area subject to natural hazards, there are no identified natural hazards or policy. It within the city. And. What was that?
Oh, sorry. It's there's a delay. It's okay.
Recreational needs. It's within the policy of chapter eight of the comprehensive plan. However, the building codes division will have us a. On the internal of the park because that is another place where building codes division has. Takes priority over. The city's development code inside of a manufactured home park. Goal nine. After thorough review of the application in chapter nine of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan and in particular, this is. This is part of the reason this is a decision for the planning commission. Because there's two ways of thinking about all of this, I guess. After thorough review of the application in chapter nine of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan and in particular. Economic policy number two, which states encourage tourist commercial activity near a interstate. Eighty four, this this application may not be within the policy. In review, staff has looked into several relative land values of the proposed use. Manufactured park sub district. And one point three acres of light industrial district. The current zoning tourist commercial. For this review, staff assemble moral county tax valuations for two manufactured home parks. And for retail services, a retail services triplex, a motel and a truck stop. Fitting the tourist commercial quote parameters. Manufactured home. Park district range evaluation. Are would be eighty five thousand five hundred and seventy six fifty five an acre. To one hundred and eighty two thousand two hundred and forty seven dollars and twenty two cents an acre. The light industrial district valid value range is forty five thousand four hundred and forty seven fifty five per acre. To four hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars an acre. And the tourist commercial range district range of value. Is seven hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and ninety seven. Dollars an acre to two million four hundred and six. Dollars or two million four hundred and six. Thousand nine hundred and six dollars an acre. So it's a significant difference in the valuation of the property. Goal ten, we kind of went over. And we have. And we've got a plenty of property. In residential zoning, there is some prop. Some problems with that because some of those big larger lots. Are only owned by four or five people and some of them are sitting on them. So you know that we do, we do actually need additional manufactured homes. And the question is, is this the right place? And then we already did transportation. This application for energy conference conservation, the application is within the policies of chapter thirteen, the comprehensive plan. And the application is well aligned with policies of chapter fourteen urbanization. And goal fifteen through nineteen do not. Apply. To the city of Boardman. And I've got. Findings of fact, public notice was posted and published in the East Oregonian and mailed to all required interested parties. And on July thirtieth, and then we reposted for the next meeting so we could. Have the first hearing. The first. Public not DLCD rejected the notice was incomplete, so no hearing was held. Three, the application is consistent with relevant criteria to manufactured home. Park sub district subsection two point one point five hundred of the Boardman Development Code. This application is consistent with and will be subject to chapter three point one access and circulation upon development. This application is consistent with and will be subject to chapter three point three vehicle and bicycle parking upon development. Number six, the application is consistent with and will be subject to chapter four point two traffic impact study upon development. This app seven application is consistent with chapter one of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. Eight, the application is consistent with chapter two. Number nine, chapter three of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan is not applicable, as is number ten, number chapter four is not applicable. Number eleven, application is consistent with chapter five of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. Number twelve, it's consistent with chapter six of the. Comp plan thirteen, there are no identified natural hazards in chapter seven of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. Fourteen, this application is consistent with chapter eight of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. The application is not consistent with chapter nine of the comp plan. The application is not consistent with chapter ten of the Boardman Comprehensive Plan. And the application is consistent with chapter eleven. The application is not consistent with chapter twelve without the corrections that we have stated tonight. And the application is consistent with chapter thirteen. Yeah, twenty, the application is consistent with chapter fourteen. And chapters fifteen and through nineteen are not applicable to the city of Boardman. DL twenty two DL DLCD notice of alteration to propose change received. Received posted to Papa online. At DLCD website on September sixteenth, the twenty twenty. Public notice was sent out on October one to all affected property owners and agencies. Property was posted with public notice October one twenty twenty. And we've gone through. We posted again and I. Give me just a second, I can. Yes, it was October twenty one was the appropriate week. October one, it was the appropriate date. So. Preliminary findings Columbia River Development Application filed July twenty eighth. This was. This was an earlier. Preliminary findings Columbia River Development filed an application to change. The zoning of tax lot sixteen hundred of moral county taps tax map four and twenty five E nine CC. Nine point two four acre parcel located currently zone tourist commercial. Request is to change the northernmost one point three acres is requested to be zoned light industrial and the balance of seven point four one acres. To be manufactured home park sub district. The city currently has a total of fifty one. Point two nine acres of tourist commercials on land and a request of. Nine point two four acres is eighteen percent of this zone. This was a preliminary list that I put together before I put together the findings. The actual findings. And some of that tourist we'd already lost. So that's why I brought it down to thirty five.
Okay. So so the fifty some acres isn't relevant, the correct acreage is the thirty.
It's the it's thirty.
Thirty seven point six.
Thirty, yeah, there you go. The city. Still has a total of has total of five point nine seven acres. Plus the two acres and this would request would X seven add seven point four acres to that total. Of nine point nine seven. Or seven point nine seven, excuse me, the proposed use. For fifty five to sixty manufactured home. This is when I did it through. The proposed would produce five hundred and fifty trip ends for a weekday of occup. And then it has per when I checked it against the development code. It actually brought it up to eight hundred and eighty with the light industrial. The pro provoke.
How does that? How does eight hundred and eighty compared to the the existing use development in IMP?
I got five hundred and fifty trips for the mobile home park from I from the code. And for the three hundred and thirty, which brings it up to that eight eighty. From Boardman Development Code four point ten point one hundred.
How does that compare to the expected trip generation of the existing zone? So it's currently tourist commercial. I was just curious if there was a comparison to what the expected trips for that.
Would we'll have it having it been. Bear property for all the time I've been here. It'd take what it what what's being proposed to look at it to figure out what that trip generation would be.
Is there any triggers laid out in the current IMP for additional trip generation and and what that would mean?
Yes, there is and. It's it's one of those places where we're at a point where we're going to have to get the loop roads in as soon as we can. You just because of the traffic. That were that is being created in the residential subdivisions that are being put in. There's times, there's times of the day right now, I I took a look at the proposed uses. Not the what's on the ground today and on Main Street by an IT. Two thousand, two thousand and nine, I think it was, they put together a database that you can kind of plug in different uses. And I came up with inside the interchange area management plan right now. Just the businesses are projected at to put eight eight hundred and eight thousand five hundred and eleven. Trip ends a day on Main Street. You had the stuff outside the IMP I I. I don't have any. Traffic count data, but I would expect it to be somewhere around twelve thousand a day. Any other questions?
That finally had before Barry ready to move on unless there's any other question from anybody else.
None of this time.
So let's move into anybody here for the proponents case, want to say a few words.
I think that would be me.
Okay.
Well, hopefully everybody understands what we're trying to do. First of all, I know that. I I just I don't know if anybody in here knows me, but for those who don't, I'm David Jones. And I own Frontier Court here in Boardman. And I have noticed in the last five years that there's been a massive uptick in the need for housing. So we get probably, I'm guessing, four to five people, well, four to five people a week. Asking if they can purchase a home or if there's any homes that are that are available. Now, what we do is we offer a mass a very low cost option for housing. So we whereas you know, right now, the cheapest house in Boardman is probably in the two hundred to two fifty range. We're we're going to be offering homes probably when we bring them in eighteen to twenty five thousand dollars. So when when the when the wage right now is, I mean, you have to be if you if you get a one bedroom over at the. Over at the new new apartment, you're looking at eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. Whereas here, my space rent is three forty in the new place, it'd probably be about three fifty. And then with with payments on the home, let's say they don't have any money to even pay for the for the eighteen to twenty five thousand dollar home. And we can do that in payments and their payment would be about three hundred dollars a month. So in total, it'd be about six hundred and fifty dollars plus their electrical. To live and that's that is that's that's huge because we need more affordable housing here in Boardman. I think that's obvious. As far as Michelle's concerned about parks, it is in plan to put a park in there. In fact, it's it's going to be double what the required required size would be. So that is in the plans, we're also the spaces are going to be much larger than the ones currently in my park, my park is is kind of small, but I think the required. The required space between trailers is is ten feet. Ours is going to be ours will be about thirty feet. So about three times what is required. About three, I think thirty three to thirty five hundred foot lot or square foot lots, which I know that's it's still smaller than. Than a regular housing division, which are five thousand square foot lots, but. It's it's pretty good size, so they'll have plenty of room and they can put a double wide there, they could probably even fit a triple way there if they wanted to. See, as far as I mean, I realize that your your questions are probably going to revolve right around chapter, chapter nine, chapter ten and chapter twelve. Of the of the Boardman Plan, but chapter nine, I you know, we got to we got to get housing first before we can think about an economic plan is my opinion. So I do believe that that we do meet the goals of chapter. So I do believe that that we do meet the goals of chapter nine in that we are trying to get the housing here, get the workers here. So that we can actually have the jobs that that are needed for that economic development. On chapter ten, I think it's very obvious that we need affordable housing. Chapter twelve, we're we're just transportation. I think we've we've addressed that as well and that we're going, we've already in the preliminary plans. There's already a sixty foot easement that I've that I kind of set aside on both the east side and the south side. To for that for that loop road. Jackie, do you by chance have have that that drawing of that preliminary drawing? Of the. Of the park that I gave to Barry? Because I don't think that was.
Let me take a look and see if I can find something.
If you don't, I do, and I can just share my screen if that's okay with the council.
I I don't know who all has access to the packets. It was in the packet. I do have a copy in front of me. I don't know if the other.
So so if you look at that that picture, hopefully, everybody, yeah, there you go. Karen's got it. If you look at that picture. Over in the right hand corner, that's where the park will be. And then on the up part and on the side part is where the loop road will be. And there's both side and both places for for plenty of of room for the loop road. And then right here on this on the upper part as well, you're going to see two little rows. Those would be the be the storage units. And that would act as a buffer. That's why I want that industrial and that light industrial to be zoning. Zone as such, so would act kind of a buffer between the the freeway and and the mobile home park. So to prevent anybody from really, I mean, it's a mobile home park, so so seeing it and granted, we're going to try as hard as we can to make sure that it's up to. It's it's very well maintained and everything like that. It will be very well maintained. But regardless, we'd like to have that buffer. So people coming off the freeway, even though they can't see very much of it, won't be able to see any of it. We're trying to do everything we can to to honestly accommodate. What what the needs of Boardman as and we've looked for other land all around. Barry says there's there's land available. Well, I've I've put a bid on several of them and all the landowners are saying either we won't sell to we won't sell or our we won't sell right now. And so it's it's really, really tough, difficult to find land right now. Oh, awesome. Yeah. So if you look at that upper, so the upper part and then to the right, that's going to be the loot road. And then the storage units will be right between the and if you above that towards the upper part of it is also the freeway. And so those will be the storage units right there that will be act as the buffer unit between the mobile home park and everything else. And then if you look down in the right hand corner, kind of right hand corner. That's where the the park will be. And that's like I said, about double what the what the state requires in part according to the number of units that we'll have. And we'll have about, I'm guessing in between fifty eight and sixty two spaces in there, but probably right around fifty nine fifty sixty spaces. With, yeah, and we'll have, we've we're already working out as far as, you know, making sure everything is is right with. With fire to to make sure that they have ingress and ingress pretty easily. Number of fire hydrants, everything's going to be one hundred percent up to code. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I I don't, I doesn't sound like anybody else does. Is is there any other proponents for the project? Thanks. Thanks, David.
No problem.
I don't hear any proponents. I don't know if the mics are muted or or nobody has anything to say. Please stop me if somebody has a opponent's case. If there is none, we'll move into the opponent's case. Is there any opponents? I don't hear any opponents.
Jake.
Yeah.
I I haven't received any additional. Con any additional comments from for this post acknowledgement pump that. Plan amendment that you guys did not get in the packet.
Okay, you know, I I guess there there is no opponents present. I would like to say whether opponents or proponents. The the letters we got on this project, we had a several. Very fill me in if if I miss any here, we had. A letter from the Department of Transportation. And they had some concerns over the IMP and the traffic analysis and traffic study and and the. The impacts associated with that type of development. I wouldn't say they were opponent or proponent. They just wanted to make sure that. The traffic needs of the interstate were considered. We also had a. A first letter, we got several leaves from the Fair Housing Council. The first letter dated on the, well, it doesn't have October twenty first, they. They asked for the commission to defer approval based upon several issues they acknowledged and then. They sent two follow up letters, I believe it is to correct Barry.
Well, one, one of those was a website or their their website that I was directed to. For a template letter that they use for these kind of situations.
Okay.
To only two of them are signed.
Okay. If I I caught it kind of funny, the first letter was a. Defer approval because of lack of information and the second letter was. To approve because of lack of information. I thought that was kind of funny. So that was letters one and two from the Fair Housing Council. The second letter was to encourage approval for Borden's housing needs based upon the the lack of a. A true study to know where the housing goals need were. We move into a letter from so skip past the next Fair Housing Council website information. We got a letter from the Department of Land Conservation and Development again. I don't know if they were. A proponent or opponent. They strongly advise to consider goal nine as some justification to our decision. And that would be the economic impact and that would that letter was from the DL, the DLCD. So we had those letters to to think about. Since we didn't have any opponents present, we can skip cross examination of opponents and proponents. The public agencies have anything to say. I know we've got a couple here. Marty have anything to say or Tamara?
No, thank you, Jacob. None, no.
Marty has none.
Okay. Okay, so. I don't believe there's any rebuttal.
Karen does have something to say.
Okay, go ahead. Karen, I believe you're muted if if you're trying to talk to us.
No, sorry, not me.
Karen.
Jackie, can you unmute her?
Well, I can ask her to unmute. I don't think it lets me unmute and I've asked. What is she doing?
Maybe she could use sign language. Or write on a paper and hold up a piece of paper. Okay, I guess we'll move on. Okay, moving on. I don't think there's any rebuttal evidence unless proponent wants to move on with any other comments.
Does anybody have any questions for me? Just just to any? Any questions whatsoever?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. So at this point in time. Did somebody try to say something? I heard something there in the background.
I just said, no, sir, I didn't have any questions for Mr. Jones.
So I'll go ahead and close this hearing and begin deliberation by the commission. Does anybody want to start with any? Points or or questions or concerns or? Anything really?
Sure, I have a question. It's Ragna. What, when do they do the traffic study?
I think Barry could probably. Answer that. I believe the traffic study would be at time of a development application. In reality, I think we've been talking about this probably in a little bit of the wrong tense as this is a zone change application. And I don't think there's an actual development application associated with the zone change.
Oh, okay, that I think that's where I was confused. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So, you know, I guess on that note, a point would be to really start really focus on not necessarily development. You know, the the maps we have in here because I don't think they're pertinent to the zone change application. This is just an application to change the zoning in itself before that gets there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I I have a few thoughts on it. As far as the zoning change goes, you know, I I think a large part of it for me boils down to. You know, what we would be missing out on for. Future development and revenues in the current zone. Zoning that it has versus the offset of the need for. Housing in Boardman. I don't, I don't know that it's an ideal location. I think it's the the. The ideal location is for the current zoning is is well suited. And that's really the balance for me. I've I'm always been a I've always been a big proponent of we need more housing in Boardman. Is probably some of the most dire needs that we have. The the loss of of land value is substantial in his own change like this. But to me, the offset could potentially be worth it, especially with the other. The other residential zones being stagnant as they are. I'm not a big fan of of having a zone. You know, residential zone so close to the to the freeway where, you know, the idea. Of having the the tourist zone before, you know, increasing the commercial value. And, you know, attracting more more traffic to increase. Revenue of the area. I think we'd be missing out on a lot of that. So I don't know. I mean, it's a tough decision for me. I think it's a it's a. One great loss and one great need.
I think you got some good points back. I I I tend to agree with you that. The the twenty five percent reduction in tourist commercial, especially in such a key location. In our town here is 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 tough to swallow, especially when you see. Properties like to the east. You know, we at the other end of Front Street on the south side of the freeway. Kind of get kind of got used up by some industrial usage to get some of those jobs here and and so we're losing kind of out on some freeway frontage. And and you know, it's been amazing the last three or four, five years seeing the housing jumping like it is. All over the place. But that. You know, that the need for. For affordable housing is is critical and. And I I think those apartments that were just built were a step in the right direction. They they are. You know, I think Barry or someone said eight hundred and fifty dollars a month, which which is expensive. But it it was it was needed. And I'm excited to see when those are completely full and the impact on the commercial. On the commercial need that 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 does, you know, I I expect or I wishful thinking. Hope that that pushes the development of these commercially zone properties next to the freeway. In the coming years, and I think they will. So I think that's a a really risky. Subject is the is the reduction of twenty five percent of that, especially in such a key location.
Yeah, fair point.
Hey, this Karen and I gone again on a different one computer, but. The thing I wanted to point out and then to go was that. When you say, when we say we have the two hundred acres of buildable land, I want to point out that that is McCarthy's farm circle. Over here on the corner of Maine and Wilson. And so you can consider that. It's zone, it's zoned, you know, residential. But it's being used as farm ground and probably will be. Until. Like the price ground gets really high, I guess, because he's lacking farming right there. So.
Okay.
That's all I have to say about this.
I keep seeing your microphone go on and off, Adam. I think you're dying to say something.
Well, I was just saying Portview Apartments, as much as everybody likes to believe that they're a hundred bucks, they're eight hundred bucks a month and higher. For somebody like me and you, the first five buildings at Portview are subsidized based on their income. For our population that works in the in the fields and the farms. So I just wanted to throw that out there that there is affordable housing at Portview Apartments that is based off their income.
By all means, guys, jump in here. We should on something this important and and. And critical to our town, I think we should definitely hear from all the commissioners if we can before we try to. Make a motion or approve or deny or whatever. It'd be nice to hear from everybody.
I also agree with some of you guys, the location of where this plans to be is not ideal. So in I work in the ag industry and so when we're trying to recruit new. You know, people over here, it's really hard to find them somewhere to live and we're. We are running out of options while there is affordable housing at Portview. It's still. It's most of it is not available and a lot of these families are doubling up. So it's, yeah, I'm I'm torn on this one as well.
I I I agree with you wholeheartedly that they're doubling up and I see that there when I when I go visit there. So I do see the need for housing.
Well, and two, I don't think I don't think that farm housing exemption. Does anybody know like Michelle maybe or Jackie, if that was a five year exemption when they were built? I don't think it's a forever thing. Barry, do you know?
I I don't know that the answer to that question.
We've had some of our guys who apply for Portview and if they're full, I mean, they can't get in. So they're forced to be in the non ag units. And for a studio, we have one of our guys playing close to a thousand dollars a month. Luckily, he and his wife work, but I mean, it's still. A studio for just the two of them at that price. It's not, it's not the greatest.
You know, on on the on the dollar amounts. Affordable housing is definitely necessary and it sounds like we've got some in the house, but or some in the city of Boardman, not as much as what's necessary. I completely agree with. On the same token, you know. The the expensive side of the residential world or the two hundred thousand plus market is in the same boat. I mean, these these houses are selling as soon as they're built, you know, and and we we look at the average wage in the in the moral county and we're sitting it. You know, the consistently the third or fourth highest wage in the state. you know, the consistently the third or fourth highest wage in the state on average, which uh, again, is, is, is tough for those low-income earners, but on the same token, we, we really got to look at um, those needs are being, you know, built, but there's still a need for expensive housing. I mean, for two hundred thousand plus homes too, so it's a, it's a need across the board for housing in my mind. Um, low income, um, high income, everything. Um, so, you know, that's kind of looking at it from a thousand-foot level. That, that's hard because you need a little bit of everything and, and at the end of the day, all types of housing are going to need facilities to support that type of housing eventually. And, you know, the tourist commercials of the world um provide a lot of tax income for the city to build those facilities and infrastructure uh, that they need to continue to build housing, you know, and, and so it's, it's kind of this double-edged sword uh on, on multiple fronts. So I, I um, I guess Cynthia, do you have any comment? Sorry to single you out, but we haven't heard from you yet.
And unmute. Yes, so, um, from what I've seen at the Portview, um, they are getting the help. That's what some families are saying there, um, because they're assisting them with the payment. So they're going through other agencies to help them pay for the rent. But I have seen a lot of families move out of those apartments because they're way too expensive. So we do need the housing, the extra housing that's way cheaper.
So I, I think Ragna, you had some questions earlier. Do you have any further comments that you'd like to elaborate on?
No, I'm just trying to figure out where it, if we don't, if we don't change the zoning here, then where does, where is their housing? But yet if we change the zoning, then we lose that, the potential for it down the road. So how do you balance the two?
Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
I'm, I apologize to interrupt, but so with the, um, with the loop roads, there will be the potential to have additional property that's in, that would act as that tourist commercial property as well. So that is a possibility. I say, I'm sorry?
Is it currently zoned tourist commercial?
Yeah, well, some of it is, but not all of it, no. So that, that's what I'm saying. There is the potential. So if there is a need for tourist commercial, there, there are still places to put it. Um, being that there will be, there will be extra property available with, that's, that's border, that's bordering a high traffic, high traffic area. So that is the, that is one option. And I, I'm with you that it's not, it's, it's not the ideal, the best location possible. Trust me, I've been, we, we've been trying everything we possibly can just to get property that's large enough so that we can build something like this. And unfortunately, this is the only thing, the only thing, and I can say that one hundred percent honestly, the only thing that is available. So unless something happens in the next near future, great. Um, as far as tourist commercial goes, we, tourist commercial is primarily for restaurants, for, for hotels, for things like that. And right now, we just had a hotel go in. I don't think we're going to be needing another hotel anytime soon. We have the plans for another hotel to go in and on the property on the other side of the freeway. It was once again, no hotels are needed really, really that soon. And as far as any restaurants or anything like that goes, I still think we have plenty of room to put that, those restaurants in. And I'm sure there's other little nicks and necks that you, that you can put in tourist, tourist commercial, but those are the main ones. So i- if we did, if you guys do decide to zone it tourist commercial, of course, that's your decision. Yeah, I don't think we're going to be losing out as much as we, we, we think we are. But that, that's just my two cents. Of course, I'm a little biased, so.
Sure. You know, I, I guess, um, something that really jumps out to me, and, and I think this is a pretty critical point uh to me, is if we were to have this um discussion in reverse, if we were trying to put uh tourist commercial um on residential zone lots, w- we probably wouldn't succeed. We'd get, um, it just wouldn't happen. You know, in today's climate, the, the industrial commercial zoning on residential lots is, is really, really tough and especially on agriculturally zoned lots. And, and as the city of Boardman expands, that's what's going to have to happen if we, if we continue to rezone our tourist commercial or industrial zone properties. The flip side is, is a lot tougher to get through than, than this one pathway. So in the future, we could be two-blocking ourselves a little bit with, with where we're going to build next. Um, after, you know, when, when that thirty-seven acres runs out, then what do we do? So, and, and Barry, do you kind of, I mean, the flip side going from residential to tourist commercial is, is a tough sell in today's Oregon climate, is it not?
It's a lot harder to put the types of faci- facilities that would go in tourist commercial into residential neighborhoods. The tourist, some of the things in tourist commercial are allowable uses in uh general commercial as well. So that it, it basically push these types of developments, the, the, the gas stations, okay, there, there's virtually a gas station on each corner. Um, except one of them's being used for uh food trucks and tire, I don't know if he's a mechanic shop or just a tire shop. He's, it's a mechanic shop. And, and then the food court, restaurant, motel. And I, I've had some folks talking to us about restaurants and locations, but the, the motels would be a little harder to, here's my interpretation of what the comprehensive plan actually says. The, the policy is was to focus. Now, if we want to change the comprehensive plan, that's a whole nother process we have to go through. But prioritize the stuff around the freeway into the tourist commercial. I, I thought, I think it's a pretty clear direction. But I agree, we need the additional space for, for uh manufactured home parks sub-districts. Let's take like, let's take Driftwood as, Driftwood RVs as, as an example. Most of the time, that's full up too. In, in construction workers that are working around the area.
Have you had a lot of, uh, you know, with, with the two hotels going, one hotel that just opened less than a week ago? And the, the talk of a new hotel going in across the freeway? I mean, what, what has been the intensity of requests for restaurant facilities? Because, you know, once, once people are, are staying here overnight in those hotels, they're going to need food and uh, and different sorts of facilities just to support the hotel itself. Has that been a pretty popular question? I know we had a, some, some Denny's, you know, um, talks um some time ago, some, maybe even, I think Sherri's talks, or what, what, what's been the, the talk of, of that front?
It, it, it hasn't been concrete. Uh, it's more poking around, trying to figure out whether the market is there yet. Some sit-down restaurants, some fast food type joints.
Okay. Thanks, Barry. Anybody else have any other comments or is somebody ready to be bold and throw out a motion here? I'm, um, you know, I know it's pretty, uh, we've got several opposing views and it's difficult, but at some point, somebody's going to have to put out a motion for recommendation to approve or recommendation to deny, uh, and we'll have to vote on it. So does anybody want to be brave?
I'll be brave. I want to make a motion.
Sit, I, I just heard, I want to make a motion.
Hear me?
Anything else?
Yes, I'll be brave. I said, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So um, I make a motion to go forwards with the mobile home units. And following all the, the required conditions.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I think I'll second that motion to approve the zone change.
So we have a motion from Cynthia, a second from Zach, to recommend to the Boardman City Council to approve the mobile home um, sub-park district zone change. Uh, Jackie, do you want to go through and do a uh name-by-name roll call on this, please?
You bet. Carla?
Hi.
Ragna?
Nay.
Zach?
Yay.
Was that a yes or a no? I'm sorry.
Isn't it yes and the affirmative?
Okay, thank you, sir. Cynthia?
Yay.
Adam?
Nay.
Jake?
I am a nay, and I know that puts us in a bad position because it's three-on-three. So what next? Who's the rules guru in the room?
Barry.
Who's the what in the room, did you say?
The rules guru.
All the rules.
I think we have three yay votes, three nay votes, and one abstention. If I'm correct, right, Jackie?
That is correct. Three yes, three no's, and one abstention. We can look this up, um, if we need to, if we want to take the time right now. But I believe if we don't have enough votes, it does not pass. Correct. Let me, let me do some Googling.
Well, I think about abstention and it, we can't force her to vote. So like they, you know, um, she, it, you're, you're three-three, and so, yeah, now you'll have to figure out what to do.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and Google it and see if I can find out. I don't believe we have a pa- enough to pass it.
Um, Tamara just asked in the chat if our, if your by, bylaws mention a pathway, the city bylaws for um what to do in a situation of a tied vote. Um, I do know, uh, in the case of tied votes, um, and, and I'm not saying this is the bylaws for the city board, so we do need to check. But there is a couple of other boards that I've sat on, um, some nonprofits where uh, the potential conflict of interest people have the ability at the end of the debate to vote. So I just want to make sure that what the bylaws of the city of Boardman are uh before we, we ask that question.
Well, our city charter speaks a lot about city council action and how they, you know, take care of ordinances and such. It does not speak a lot about, it does talk about planning commission, but I don't believe it says how the votes go in planning commission like it does. I'm searching it right now.
So I do believe, uh, uh, somebody made a comment and I believe it's true and, and depends on the charter and, and what comes out of what Jackie finds, but if we are three-on-three, uh, that is an impasse, uh, we probably, um, I don't know if that would go to city council as, you know, the planning commission could not come to an agreement. Or, um, I, I think maybe, like I said, let's, let's find out what Jackie finds out, but an additional option is to, is to uh um, curb the motion and, and propose a new motion um to rectify the impasse, um, which could be uh um, conditions, it could be uh, you know, I, I guess that's the only recommendation I have is I think if somebody wanted to propose a new motion, we could vote again. Um, propose in a different direction, maybe not uh a full approval. Um, we could make a motion for approval with conditions or uh denying with uh, you know, conditions for more information. Anybody got any ideas? While Jackie's still looking.
Just, I, I just saw from Tamara Mabbitt, the planning commission action, it uh being a recommendation to the city council uh because it's a legislative uh, action, it has to go through to, to complete hearings. So that can go before the city council with a, with a record that it was an impasse.
Okay, I want to make sure, I, I'm reading it too. Tamara, do you want to explain that? I, I'm reading it and uh, I, I think you're on to something there, um, but I, I kind of lose it in the last sentence, so.
Okay.
Want to explain that a little bit?
You bet. So again, this is a legislative action, not a quasi-judicial. It's legislative because you're changing your plan and your zoning. So your, the planning commission action is a recommendation to the city council.
Sure.
Um, so a split vote is you can share with them that the planning commission split three-to-three with an abstention on this action. And so then they take it up anew. The city council has the ability to kick it back to you if they want you to vet additional issues, but it's not the planning commission role to make a final decision. So I, I think you're safe to forward the conclusion, the vote that you have here.
Does anybody have any uh issues with that? Or Jackie, have you found any additional information?
Yeah, there's nothing that speaks to it in our ordinances. There's a, a lot that talks about planning commission, but not how to do a tiebreaker or how we're supposed to go on a vote, so.
Do you know, oh, oh, sorry, Jake, I have a question. Do you follow Robert's rules?
Gosh, I don't know. I think we do.
Yes, parliamentarian. Okay, so, okay, if you do, um, a three-to-three is, is a, is a split vote and it dies um for lack of support, but again, this is legislative, so.
Sure.
Um, I don't know. I think you can move it forward. And you're also not under a time constraint, right? Because it's legislative. So you don't have to process and make a final decision within a hundred and fifty days.
Does anybody have any issues with sending it to city council with a split decision from the planning commission as, as the recommendation?
No. I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay. Moving on. Um, so uh, I think this is going to be kind of, uh, quick and easy. We 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 opened, uh, PAPA two, um, at our last commission meeting. Um, if you remember, the applicant AWS asked for a continuance. At this point in time, I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing again because we did continue it to this date. And and I, they're, they have asked again to continue for another month. Um, so, uh, is there a time and date for our next commission meeting? And we can, um, I think we've got a vote to continue to that date. If if somebody's going to have to.
Yeah, you'll have to make a motion and 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 the next meeting is December sixteenth and it'll be at seven PM.
So at this time, I'll go ahead and open, uh, PAPA two dash twenty twenty again. Um, do I have any motions, um, for the requested continuance by the applicant?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the continuance until the next meeting in December.
I'll second it.
And that was Carla seconded?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue, um, the public hearing of PAPA two dash twenty twenty on our normally scheduled commission meeting night in December the sixteenth, twenty twenty at seven PM. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, all pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Um, and, uh, so I'll go ahead and, um, gosh. What is the word I'm looking for? What is?
Continue hearing.
Go ahead and continue the 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 meeting at this time. Um, so any other discussion items, Barry?
Um, just a couple of little updates there, um, the River Ridge, uh, phase three, the streets were finished today. They're, or most of the utility trenches are in, so the utilities like electric, uh, communications and gas can go into the lots. It'll be a thirty lot subdivision that COVID is, uh, how do I say this nicely slowed up a bunch? And now they're, um, they're hoping to, uh, start building houses in there, um, by sometime in December.
That's great news.
Things have been, the the when that wind wave and PD fast are, uh, getting towers and and, uh, conduits and, uh, fiber optics as part of the broadband grant that we, the city received, received. Uh, today, they they pretty much finished the loop with the conduits. Now they'll, they'll have to pull to put the fiber in the conduits and we should start seeing much higher, uh, rates of of speed on our internet services, so. That was, we we have to have it finished by the thirty first. That's why you're seeing so much activity around your house, Michelle. And other than that, uh, getting some bites on some retail stuff, uh, looks like they're both, both of them are pretty serious. And not, you know, just busy. Putting lots of houses up. How many do we have going now, Jackie?
Uh, oh, gosh, I don't know. I've got six of them sitting here waiting to be purchased, but probably about nine, at least nine.
In construction right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll bet there's about nine of them out there and there's, as I said, six more sitting right here to pick up any day.
That's probably a new record since, what was, the mid sixties? When they moved the town or?
Mid.
I don't know, I wasn't.
But the last, the the last time that we were putting up this many houses was probably back around seventy six to seventy eight.
It's exciting.
That's awesome news.
Yeah, thirty more and and then we've got another subdivision, uh, um, over on the other side of trade winds that they want to get started in December as well.
And what's the price point on those?
They're, they're shooting for the two hundred to two twenty, two twenty fives. Uh, the ones, the ones in River Ridge are going to be a little lower than that. They'll be in the one seventies to one in nineties.
Awesome. Anything else?
Nope.
I've got a two year old trying to break in my door. He's been trying to break in for the last hour. So I've got a, I'm ready to go if you guys are, um, if there's no other comments for good of the ore, go ahead and adjourn at this time. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you all.